Cell phone, please either turn it off or silence the ringer.
I can look into those.
Where's my agenda? Here it is.
Oh, my goodness.
So, we had an executive session before the meeting for ORAS 19266028 to the employment of public officer, employee, staff, member, individual, agent. I'll now call the regular meeting in the Oregon City Commission order for Wednesday, July 19th. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ie, here. Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Mengeleberg is absent this evening. Mayor Holliday.
Here. If you'll all please stand, join me in flag. Flag the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, for all.
Okay, so, under ceremonies and proclamations, we have two events, 17-441 for the homeless liaison program. Mr. Band.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. We are, as you know, this the other day, about our new homeless liaison that recently got added into the budget. I've got, this is Officer Mike Day, and Captain Sean Davis are with him, to kind of introduce Mike, so you could see his face, and then hear a little bit about some of the things that Mike's already starting to do, and answer any questions you have, so.
I know Mike.
Without further ado.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Captain Sean Davis, and I oversee the Patrol Division. We're here just to do a little presentation of Officer Mike Day and our homeless liaison position. Just to get started, a little bit of history, homelessness has become a critical issue for our city. The police, the parks, code enforcement, they were receiving numerous complaints about livability issues, and crimes against public order of disorderly conduct, urinating in public, that kind of stuff. So, we realized what was, what we were doing wasn't working, so we want, we had to do a new way of thinking, and we wanted to focus on outreach. So, we kind of reached out and learned from what other cities are doing, kind of like Salem, San Diego, and developed our homeless liaison officer program. Mike Day was selected as our officer for this, and he started just July 1st, so, just under three weeks ago. The mission is to engage our stakeholders and our community with a community-based outreach. Our goal is, obviously, is to end homelessness, and address underlying causes of the homelessness, which could be mental health, it could be drug addiction, alcohol addiction, it could be as simple as not having ID to get a job, or collect that kind of stuff. So, Mike's figuring out what they need, and how to accomplish that. And then less than the negative impacts on individuals and families and businesses here in Oregon City. So, our stakeholders, we kind of identified, our residents, our homeowners, our business in the city, and we want to help address the livability using those stakeholders. Mike's working diligently to also identify other community stakeholders that want to provide outreach, and help these individuals. And so, he's developed quite a few partners, he's going to talk about all the partners he's done, that are providing outreach.
So, Mike Day, Oregon City Police, the newly selected homeless liaison officer. I'm excited to be able to share with you guys, and I'm excited to be in this new position. Started out in July, and my approach is more or less designed to be like the initial point of contact for the homeless individuals in our community, to be that point of contact for businesses and stakeholders who are having issues with our homeless population, to address those issues and concerns, to address those with, say, Father's Heart, to educate them, so that they could spread the word about those issues. But then, to take an individual approach to our homeless population, as each of their circumstances is different from one another, and so, in order to find and come up with long-term solutions, I need to be able to address those individual barriers. So, I've been networking with area resources, working with Riverstone and the Behavioral Health Unit, working with Clackamas County Homeless Veterans Outreach, Dave Denny, I've been attending the Oregon City Homeless Solutions Coalition meetings, and networking through there. I've worked with the Transition Center, which is up near the jail, that provides a variety of services, from drug treatment, to mental health access, and many things in between, a GED program. So, I'm, I'm doing what I can to know what's there, and then I'm trying to apply that to our individual population. Just to give you a, kind of a story of maybe a start to a success in my, in my short time in this program, this photograph here, you'll, in the middle there, sitting down, you'll see Mitchell St. Marie, you'll see myself, Josh Dale, and then Dave Denny is standing in the back, from Clackamas County Veterans Outreach. I started reaching out to him, I contacted him at Safeway in Oregon City, learned that he was in the military, he had been homeless for, for a little bit of time, and that he's, kind of his slide into homelessness started.
With the slide.
With the slide, yeah, that Newell Creek Canyon there, and he was one of those residents that was affected, he moved out of his home, he subsequently was able to get another apartment, he couldn't afford the rent, and from there, he lost his place, and he wasn't sleeping well on the streets, so he was falling asleep at his longtime job, and he lost his job. So, I contacted him, found him to be homeless, found him to be a really cool dude, I called him my favorite person the other day, just because I quite enjoy talking with him, and he's hard to get a reaction out of. But, he, he didn't have any income, and so, I started working with him. I contacted Dave Denny with Clackamas County Homeless Veterans Outreach, we met with him, and in the process of kind of helping him, as we learned, he was probably going to use, lose his storage unit, which houses all his belongings. We found that he also had a very severe-looking infection in his leg, so we had to kind of put some stuff on hold, and while I was inside explaining this situation to the office staff there, this gentleman, Josh Dale, who works for Pioneer Packaging, I believe it is, happened to overhear the situation, and volunteered, you know what, I'm going to pay for two months of this guy's storage unit, so he doesn't lose this thing, so it was a pretty neat deal. So, we get Mitchell to the hospital, from the hospital, I continued to stay in contact with him, communicate with social workers at the hospital. He's accepted into a 30-day recupative care program, through Central City Concern, where he's currently staying, retrieving, receiving medical treatment, so that his leg doesn't become, again, infected, and find him back in an ER. He also has access to case management there. I went down there just the other day with Dave Denny, after I got a letter from Mr. Dale, with more good news, that between him and some friends, they had paid for his, his storage unit through the, through January of 2018.
Wow.
And then, city staff reached out, and gave me some information regarding a donation fund that was set up for people who lost their place, or who were affected by the slide. And when I came in to work this week, there was a $500 check from that fund, so I was able to deliver that to Mr. St. Marie. I've been in contact with his previous employer, the Human Resources Department, found that they are not contesting his unemployment claim, he's eligible for unemployment. So, tomorrow, I have a meeting with him at 10 o'clock, and we're going to go down to the unemployment office, and start that process. Today, I bumped into him, and I took him over to the DHS, I gave him a ride over there, where we were able to fill out his recertification process for his food stamps. He was getting one benefit, because things have changed now, he'll likely be able to get a substantially bigger benefit. So, things are coming together, we're working with him, and I'll continue to work with him, and that's the approach that I've been taking with other people individually as well. What are your needs, how can we meet those needs, so that we aren't responding to calls for service, where citizens are having issues with you urinating on their back porch, or things of that nature, and I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Awesome. Questions?
So, Mike, why don't you also talk about the instance where you got to use the intergovernmental agreement we have with the county for a mental health specialist, that I believe you had an instance up there at Wendy's here the other day.
Absolutely, that was just prior to me starting in my formal capacity, but there was a gentleman that I contacted up at the Wendy's, and he was someone that we've had some frequent contact recently, and he's struggling from some pretty severe mental health issues. And he didn't meet the criteria for me to be able to take him into protective custody and a police officer's hold, to be evaluated by a, by a doctor who specializes in something like that. But, we have an agreement with Clackamas County Behavioral Health Unit, I requested them come out to the scene, they are trained specifically for people struggling with mental health, they were able to place a director's hold on him, and subsequently, he went to the hospital, where he could be treated and evaluated. I've since, in my capacity, used them, I just had them out yesterday, for another homeless vet that I started working with, who's struggling with some things, some, hearing some voices and things of that nature. They came out, and we're getting the ball rolling with connecting him with those services. Additionally, just to continue on that, one subject to struggling with mental health issues, I worked, reached out to a case manager through the Behavioral Health Unit, and we, he didn't have insurance, and so, I was able to give him a ride there, and within that day, with her help, he was approved for OHB. So, that starts to get him up on his feet.
So, one of the things I just want to say, before Mike talks about, kind of the little future project we're looking at, you can sit and listen to everything that he just say, said, and go, okay, why's a cop doing that? Is that, is that the role of a police officer, to be doing this? In policing, when you're talking to victims, suspects, you know, on the criminal end, there are times where you need to feed somebody before you have a conversation, or, I bought guys that I'm going to interview for a crime, a pack of smokes, because that's what they needed at the time. It changes the relationship, to just kind of give, give and recognize a need or two. I didn't realize until we had all communally done this, we're the first agency in this county to dedicate a full-time police officer to do this, the county hasn't done it, and I love that we do things like this first. The, the point of why, and this is really a shift from how we first looked at dealing with homeless, I'll be honest, but, for us to have the kind of conversations, and for the tone of those conversations, we kind of have to build this mutual trust between ourselves and between the homeless community, and that's, that is why we're going to kind of first be seen as helpers, and not just people who are going to come arrest and, and do the citations. Now, we are still going to do those things, that doesn't mean that people who happen to be homeless, just like people who aren't homeless, when you commit certain crimes, you are going to be held accountable for those crimes. That still exists, but this is just a way of us changing the conversation, and I, I think in the end, that is going to make us, as a city, a lot better at dealing with homeless issues. So, Mike, you want to talk, one of the, one of the things that Mike's going to talk about here, we, we had a meeting, some of you were at, we've got all these people with a bunch of initials behind their name, talking about homelessness, and we asked a couple homeless people, what do you guys think? We're talking about all these big lofty ideas, and a guy goes, bathrooms, we need bathrooms, we need somewhere to go to the bathroom. And, and for me, it was kind of, we're all kind of overthinking things, how about a bathroom? And, so, Mike, why don't you, why don't you talk about this?
Sure, and this was a conversation that came up, I believe it was, with Phil Lewis during a park advisory meeting, right? We discussed this previously, but, we don't have locations around the clock for our homeless population to use the restroom. Our parks close, and then they're violating park rules by being there, there's the occasional porta potty around, but, it's not necessarily permanent, and so, some of the large complaints we're receiving is from the community about public urination and defecation. Concerns from the homeless population is that we don't want to go to the bathroom outside, but we got to go. So, I was kind of doing a little bit of research, and I came across this group called Artapotties, and I reached out to Rebecca with Artapotties, and essentially, her story is, is that she works at an art gallery, and adjacent to that gallery is a, an alley, and it was, she would come to work, and she started being scared to come to work, because there'd be homeless people laying there, and they would be using the restroom on the walls and in the alley, and it was just disgusting. So, she reached out with some, a small group of people, and they came up with this artapotty idea. Basically, what they do is they get, they get a porta potty, and they, they found someone who would put a vinyl vandalism-proof wrap of artwork on the porta potty, so that it's a, it's a restroom, and not an eyesore. So, it, it creates a little bit of curb appeal, which you don't expect from a porta potty, and it serves a purpose. It helps the homeless population have a place where they can go, make them feel, you know, give them a little bit of dignity, and then additionally, it, it will ideally reduce the amount of people who are using the restroom on the backs of access and odontics, or whatever business they choose to use down on Main Street, and that, twofold, is what we really are looking for. So, I reached out to Rebecca, they've had some good success with this, and.
Salem.
Yeah, it's out of Salem. And she actually came up here to Oregon City and met with us, she's very excited about the idea of kind of branching out with it to, to our area, and basically, they, they had people, like, from faith-based organizations that would donate these units, and it's been successful for them, and what we're excited to do, and hoping to do, is move forward as the police department, spearheading this idea, and saying, we want to be behind putting out those first artapotty unit, artapotty units, and providing this neat thing that isn't an eyesore, that provides this great thing for both, both, all members of the community, essentially. So, I reached out to Trent Klink-Scales of Klink-Scales Porta Potty, and they're, they're located at a mall, they've been there, I think, since 1982, and I had heard that he's just a heck of a guy. So, I called him up, and I told him about what we were thinking of doing, and how I thought it would benefit the community, and he said, I'm on board. And so, I said, what would you think, as far as a partnership was concerned, and he said, I like it, and he's willing to do some pretty cool donations for us, to be able to get, obtain our first porta potty-turned-artapotty, and then to offer us some, basically, splitting of the ongoing service of those artapotties. Just from a mere conversation followed by a meet, he said, yep, this is something I want to support. So, Trent Skank, Trent Klink-Scales, if he's watching, we're thankful, we're excited for this idea, and.
So, some of the, some of the things that, questions, right, where are they going to go?
Yeah.
What our plan is, is to kind of do a, see how this works. This guy, we reached out to see what they cost, this guy's going to donate the first one to us, they're about $500. We have had several problems, and there are several homeless folks around here that are in wheelchairs, and so, rather than just getting, we're going to do two, instead of getting two regular ones, we want to get a wheelchair-accessible one, because that is, appears to be the need here. And so, we're, we're going to buy the wheelchair-accessible one, our understanding is that those have not been done. And then, the hope is, so, one thing Salem said is, each of these, they pump out about 30 gallons of waste a week.
A week.
Do you think about 30 gallons of that downtown somewhere, per? I think that's significant, and so, we're going to find a couple places around town, and hopefully, this is something people like, if it's not, they can go away, but, if, if people like it, then we would kind of hope that maybe we've got some businesses who are also seeing these issues, and wanting to do something, say, hey, we'll put one, and we'll put it over here. So, that is, that is coming to a porta potty near you. Do you guys have any more questions for Officer Day or Captain Davis?
I just have a comment, I'm really excited about your being here, and your, this position, and I just want to really point out that the fact that you even are in this position today is because you have, you have a boss and a city manager who have, have bought into the value of the position, and I think that there's just been like a mindset change of, you know, the homeless aren't going away, we need to do something to help them, and your, your willingness to utilize the services in the community, and just, rather than actually, you know, we're not a social service agency, but, but we can direct people to those things, and that part is, is really exciting to me, and you just, you just took the words out of my mouth a minute ago, about, you know, how, how the, building the relationships with, with the people is very strongly then turns it around, and there's trust, and there's respect that's developed, and, and from that, you know, it, it just draws people into a greater health. And so, you know, offering the services, and moving on from there, I just think it's, it's a win-win situation, and you have my full support.
Thank you.
Yes? And I think that we're probably going to be kind of a template for other cities, so, be prepared to have a contact from other cities as we do this and stuff, because we're not the only ones in this position, you know, so.
Absolutely.
So, you're really kind of setting the stage for this, Mike, so, and Chief, thanks, and Captain Davis is here, so, as we did with the Right-Away Program, you know, we've had other people come to us about that, so, we're, we're, we're setting the stage again here, so, thanks so much.
Commissioner Don, you got anything?
Other than to say, it's obvious it's not going to get solved from the top down by the federal government, so when you figure it out, and you got this program that works, so let's take it to Washington, and say, here's how you get it done.
Well, what we'll do is, we'll take it to the US Conference of Mayors in January, because that's where we really get things done, so. The, the one thing I'm going to ask, and I don't want to, to take this the wrong way, but, there are folks in our community who will ask me, so, if we go back to Field of Dreams, if we build it, will they come? Are we, you know, are we creating an environment, sort of like the city of Portland has, where, you know, we're actually attracting homeless from outside our community, so.
Actually, the statistics do not support that, that's speculation.
Okay.
The statistics don't support it.
I'm just asking a question, because somebody's going to ask me.
I know, you can just tell them, the statistics don't support it.
All right, all right.
I think one of the great things, as we've evolved on this conversation, is that whether we build it or we don't build it, it is here.
Correct.
And it's not going down year after year, so I think, you know, we're going to, you know, if there is no, if you do these three things, everything gets better, so I think we're, we're, we're blazing some new trails here, and we'll see how they work, but I, you know, I think it's just great to be able to be able to think outside the box, try these things, hear from a community, hear from the, the homeless community, what do you really need, and, and having that line up with one of the impacts on the businesses, I think it's a good place to start, and, and we'll go from there, so, but.
Great job.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So, Chief, are you presenting this other thing, or is that just reading material? This?
Let's just take it home and.
Oh, okay. So, next up, we have the 2018 Regional Transportation Plan, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you very much. So, yes, we're talking about the RTP, or the Regional Transportation Plan. This is a process that's driven mostly by our metro regional government, they do it every eight years, with an update every four, so this is a big update year for the Regional Transportation Plan. So, there's a variety of, of things that Metro does for the region, but I think this is one that brings a lot of value, forces us to look ahead at transportation in particular, and develop projects, priorities, and project lists, so that as we deal with funding questions or grant opportunities, we have somewhere to look to for future planning, so we can start, you know, preliminary plans on these kind of projects, kind of do things to help move them forward along the way, with the idea that at some point in time, most of these projects, we see a, a funding forecast that helps ensure that we can deliver these. So, I think this is one of the great things that Metro's done for the region, and with that, it, it's, it's a lot of planning behind it, so it takes a lot of time, and they typically, like I said, they do these updates every four years, and really, it's almost like the minute the RTP is done, they're already kind of jumping back in and rethinking it. So, they started this process back in 2015, and we're just now getting to a place where we're actually seeing the reality of what that means in terms of project lists. One of the, so, throughout this process, they've, they've refined their transportation vision, which a lot of this is driven by air quality, which is kind of, was kind of surprising to me as I went through it, but, obviously congestion as well, and sometimes those two are, are, are very similar in the long-term goal of reducing, congestion means better equality. So, they have put a lot of energy into refining the revenue forecast for how we might pay for some of these projects, and what's the reality of the, the project list and our ability to pay for it as a region, through all the various funding mechanisms, whether it be SDCs, it's typically not, they typically don't include maintenance dollars, so, lots of times, gas taxes for most agencies don't cover much more than, and that's true for us, too, don't cover much more than, than routine maintenance, and as you know, our payment maintenance fee is pretty dedicated to maintenance, so, those numbers weren't included in there, but there's lots of other things, grants, urban renewal, a lot of agencies, you know, contribute a lot of urban renewal to transportation projects, so, that's there. Then they have created a project evaluation framework, which, you know, talks a lot about goals of the program, which I'm going to cover, and at the end of the day, they end up with a project list, which is really what most of us are trying to get to. So, this is the, the Metro's transportation vision, it was approved by the Metro Policy Advisory Committee, and the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, and the Metro Council in May of 2017. So, I'll just read it, for those that don't care to read it, "In 2040, everyone in the Portland Metropolitan Region will share a prosperous, equitable economy and exceptional quality of life sustained by safe, reliable, healthy, and affordable transportation systems with travel options." So, lofty goal, maybe? I, I still see a lot of congestion in our future, but with the hopes that we will be able to at least realize much of this goal, I think is a good, it's a good vision to have, so, I won't say much more than that. Revenue forecasts and investment strategies, so, the revenue forecast, Metro's evaluating what the passage of the transportation funding bill is really going to have on some of these as well, so that's still a work in progress, we're not quite done. The financially constrained project list, so, you're, a lot of you are familiar with financially constrained and unconstrained, so, we've got two categories of, of investment strategies that are funded, or thought to be able to be funded in the region. Then there's a third that they call strategic priority projects, and these are, these are priority projects, and they're still on the list, but we are going to have to find a new way to fund a lot of those projects. So, we, again, the revenue forecasts are much better than they were in prior regional transportation plans, so, because of that, the number of projects that are likely to be funded or financially constrained has definitely dropped, and they've, we've been working with other staff across the county to sharpen our pencils a little bit, look a little harder at projects, figure out what are really the projects that maybe we want to focus on for the next planning period. So, there's some objectives that are expected in the call for projects, obviously, we need to, they need to be projects to kind of help us reach that regional vision, they want projects that cost at least a million dollars, if they're not a million dollars, they want them bundled. Projects must come from adopted plans, so for us, that's our transportation system plan, maybe a trails plan, those kind of things, that have already gone through a local, public-vetted process, and so, they've got a lot of, again, things that they want to achieve in picking these projects, so we focused our search on projects that kind of met that criteria. So, in the city, we have 34 projects, and we've listed them there, the, the various, this is pretty small to read, and I'm having a little trouble reading it from here, at a distance, and even on my paperwork, so I'm having, my vision range must be right in the middle.
Project list costs for 2018 to 2027 Oregon City, $40,750,000, for the 2028, 2040, or, yeah, it's 2040, it's $59,400,000. The strategic project list is $101 million, and the total cost of all of those is $201,250,000.
Thank you, Mayor. The other agency folks that are, that are highlighted there with stars, that I wanted to mention, was Happy Valley's numbers are big, it also includes the, what was Damascus in their numbers, and the other ones, there's portions of some of these cities that are in Clackamas County, and other parts of those cities that are also in another Washington County in this case, so, that's just a caveat. So, that's where the project list is, we're actually slated to make our final submission on Friday, so, it's work that's moving along fairly quickly. We do have a detailed project list, which we didn't include, but we provided this graphic, which shows some of the projects that are on our list, Main Street, obviously, the things, the improvements along 99E, down near Willamette Falls, the Lynn Avenue projects, the Roundabout, Abernathy, several out in the Beaver Creek Concept Area, so, lots of good projects, Myers Road, we think they're priorities based on what we know today, and that's how we've kind of drafted our response to those projects, and how we're submitting that to Metro. So, again, coordination of all these projects has been with the county, I think we've been doing a good job with that. This morning, the C4 Metro Committee essentially gave a nod of approval for the work that's going on, and the direction that we're going. The deadline is Friday, and then there's several other things that really kind of put us through to really not final approval till. to really not final approval till 2018. So it's still a lengthy process, but we keep narrowing that list and keep sharpening pencils. And at the end of the day, we hope to have a good regional transportation plan project list. So the other thing I wanted to talk about tonight was just this transportation investment package. The House Bill 2017-10, the legislature approved that. I think there was a lot of work that went into that. We haven't been tracking it real closely, but because our influence on that has been small. But I think there's been some hard work there. The big disappointment was that, was that the I-205 project was removed from that list of projects. So we still have, we still have some engineering dollars that ODOT, I say we, I mean, the region.
$15 million.
Has some planning money to pursue that. So there's still some work that's going to go on there. I would also say that today, I heard that there was a lot of talk from the legislature that the 205 project is still a high priority. They just, they're talking some other measures that I'm not sure will be that successful with highway funding in the metro region that would involve some form of tolling. So we'll see where that conversation goes. So it's definitely not the package that was originally published, but it's a good package. And you're going to see how that'll make a difference for Oregon City here in a minute. So just, and I guess the other thing is, is there's still several other forms of grant funding that are going to be available out there that we're going to continue to keep an eye on. This is very difficult for you to read and I apologize for that, but there is a publication out that has a lot of information about how the [inaudible] been approved is going to happen. It happens and hits just about any form of transportation that's out there, short of skateboards, I think. But definitely, they're planning to, or they have approved a fuel tax increase that is a four cent increase in the first two years. So those are the, up at the top left of your screen there, it shows kind of the fuel tax increases. So it's four percent, or four cents, sorry, four cents for the first two years and then goes up two cents every biennium for the next three bienniums. And they've also got an increase to vehicle registration and title fees. Owners of electric cars will be, will, you know, help contribute as well. There's a 5% tax on vehicles with gross vehicle weight rating of 2,600 pounds or less. Again, that's kind of focused on those, those smaller fuel, more fuel efficient cars that aren't, they're still providing wear and tear to the road, but they don't necessarily pay it in gas taxes. So the bicycle excise tax is a way to collect some funding from bicycles. And then there's a statewide payroll tax, which I believe mostly helps out the public transit system. So I think, I'm sure there was a lot of negotiating and hard work that went into that. I think it's a difficult topic and a tough place. And I, it's meaningful for Oregon City. And this slide here, what I heard this morning from the C4 meeting was these numbers may change somewhat, but at this point, that's, these are very close. So for Oregon City, overall, over the 10-year total, it represents $8,197,700. And that would be money that could be spent on transportation enhancement projects. I'm thinking those projects that are partially funded because they're growth projects, but then there's another element of them that are not paid for through transportation system development charges. This money would help that match and help cover some of those costs. So it doesn't necessarily have to work out that way. We really haven't had that discussion, but that's the first thing that came to my mind when I was looking at that. So with that, I'm done and happy to answer any questions.
So to be clear, on the first, the regional transportation plan, all of those numbers mean almost nothing. In reality, there is no money that is, at this point in time, is aimed at those projects. That's merely a wish list from the different jurisdictions. Is that correct?
I would say it's much more positive than that. I think there is money out there. That's how we did, because we have put a lot of energy into doing a revenue forecast for how we would pay for those projects. And that, that's, that's real money. They pulled it out of our budget and out of our growth projections. So, you know, a lot of it's transportation SDCs that would help fund those projects. So they're looking at it from what the city is likely to collect. What they didn't take was any ideas, for instance. They didn't know about where the legislature was going to land on this. So the current numbers that they had in the RTP didn't reflect legislative fix. Now, they're working those back in because it's a, it's a done deal. But, you know, things like, the city couldn't go to them and say, well, you know, we're going to pass a bond measure to fund transportation improvements. We haven't done it yet, but we're thinking we're going to do it. So let's include that in the forecast. That didn't happen. So the numbers are based on projections of growth, SDCs. Like I said, a lot of cities have urban renewal programs that are, that are supportive of transportation improvements. So a lot of cities have forecasts for that. And other, other funding mechanisms, if you're in Washington County, they're in a much better situation to help fund these projects through some of their additional fees that they pay, their citizens pay. So, you know, I think the financially constrained list, Mayor, is, is one of those things, just like many of the projects that were in the RTP before that have been accomplished or funded through those same mechanisms. It's a lofty goal, but I still think that there's plenty of projects on that list that in, during that planning horizon will be completed.
So Mr. Lewis, could you go back one slide for me, please? Another, please. There's a category there called Safe Routes to School Grants. Are these approved monies available to be pursued by virtue of grant writing?
Safe Roads typically has been a successful program that has been a grant program. And it has been underfunded to the point of almost nonexistence. So this transportation package will refund that program so that those agencies, especially if we're working with our school district, they're, it's, it's pretty important that the school districts be on board or we won't be successful in applying for those Safe Roads to School Grants. But yeah, they're specific to helping get students from their homes to school.
Well, my thought is many of our traffic problems involve access to our high school out there and in crossing 213. So I would strongly encourage if we have our grant writer to get pen in hand and pursue some of these monies. Even though they're small monies in the grand scheme of thing, every bit helps.
Yes, I agree. Any other questions or?
Yep. Good job. Thanks, Joe. Thanks, sir. Okay, moving on. If I can find my agenda. Here we go. Now, next up, is everybody okay with the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, we have no public hearings tonight?
Um, we got citizen comments.
Oh, forgot. Do we have citizen comments? Oh, we do. Okay. I apologize. So Mr. Ziegler and Mr. Baskins, please.
Good evening. I'm Wendell Baskins, 1315 Lafayette Avenue, Oregon City. I'm here with the report on the Heritage Holiday, the Heritage Days and the Rose Parade. And starting with the Rose Parade, I'd like to thank Commissioner Ie and her grandson for marching along with us. And former Mayor Doug Neely, as Dr. Mack, I believe that he talked to nearly everyone along the route and a good time was had. And if you didn't make it, sorry you missed it. We did have a great time and I think it represented Oregon City well. It really did. The Heritage Days itself, we got excellent press from the Oregon City News. We made a picture on the front page. The highlight of that was meeting the first Rose Festival Princess from Oregon City, talented, articulate, marvelous young lady. She was with us when we were in period costume. And right next to the Oregon City float at the Rose Parade was a conveyance for the, some of the Rosarian judges. And the comment was heard, and it was our understanding that she made such a great impression on the judges that they, several of them commented to the Heritage folks there that she really should have won. She was just a dynamite young woman and I think she represented Oregon City High School and the school district in Oregon City well. Heritage Days, June 23rd and 24th, again, thanks to Commissioner Ie for participation at the Mountain View Cemetery and Commissioner Shaw for coming out and participating. And any others who showed up, the word didn't bubble up to get into the report. What we saw, the Heritage Sites greeted and met over 1,000 people in those two days. Numbers were hard to come up with, but that number is based on the number of people who signed into the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. We know the significant numbers didn't start the journey there. So I think 1,000 is realistic. We know from the experience of sites that there were some excellent comments. First, the comments were all favorable. First, gee, I've lived here all my life and I never knew this was here, especially the Rose Farm. But all the other sites, the Irmentinger House and coming open with it was a major site in this. Next question, next comment, are you going to do this again next year? People were really excited about being involved in this. And it's interesting, one of the most interesting questions, and it does impact your, maybe in your thought, was where do we get lunch? Depending on where they were in the cycle, they were directed downtown by the elevator. That was one of our sites on the tour. And some took advantage of that. Also directed to those folks along 7th Avenue, up and down the hill. The Bistro across from the Interpretive Center had a very, very busy day, we understand. What's next? Well, October 21st, there's another event being planned. It's called Footsteps from the Past. And more notification will be coming out about it shortly. And December 2nd is a holiday event where the Heritage Sites will be open this year, hopefully with the private historic sites. So we put together a combined tour. Instead of using two days of time, we put together a combined day in which both the traditional Heritage Sites and the private homes will be open. We'll see how that's out. And just a reminder, 175th anniversary of the opening of the Oregon Trail is coming next year. Along with the 50th anniversary of the National Park Service's Long Distance Trail Division, in which we actually got federal recognition for the Oregon and Santa Fe and those trails. What we know from history is the 150th celebration and, well, the 150th celebration of the Oregon Trail, the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center, in the years around 1993, averaged approximately 71,000 visitors per year. I would like to be optimistic and say the 175th is going to be, but it's not because it's not going to get the attention in the play. I know that the National Park Service is already starting to plan the 200th anniversary of the opening trail, along with the 175th. But if OC only gets half as many, that's a lot of meals, beds and tours that can impact into the town. And you say, well, we just, the groups that are in planning, we're already in planning for that now. And last meeting, you asked me to contact the manager. We'll be talking.
Mr. Baskins?
We get there.
You're about double your time, so if you.
I'm done.
If you can wrap that up.
Planning is beginning by various groups. Any questions?
Thank you for your efforts on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ziegler.
All right. I'll be brief. My name is Kent Ziegler. Address 2142 Merrillwood Court. I'm presently the president of the Oregon City Business Alliance. And I'm really here on behalf of the Business Alliance to congratulate the city of Oregon City in their recent victory. We are very, very excited, all of us that are on the board and everyone that participated in all the efforts that took place on the urban renewal appeal. The Oregon City Business Alliance supported that from the very beginning. We realized that for Oregon City to prosper, it needs to have that in the toolbox. And activity breeds activity. We recently did a forum not too long ago about all the different projects that were taking place in the northern portion of the gateway to Oregon City. And now that you have urban renewal available to you, the Oregon City Business Alliance wants to stand behind the city 100% to see the landfill go forward and any other projects associated with that area. So I know I'm not allowed to bring in champagne, but we would love to celebrate that sometime. So I think that's just a red letter date and we're all very excited to see what takes place from this point forward, rolling up our sleeves and seeing what can happen. The other thing I wanted to announce, because the transportation plan and other issues that have recently occurred in the legislative session that just concluded, our speaker at our Oregon City Business Alliance forum next Tuesday will be our newly elected representative, Mark Meek. We would love to have everyone who is here in attendance this evening, watching on television, all our elected officials, attend. Because the way you get things done is at the National Mayor's Conference, but it's also through our elected officials. And if our local people do not understand what our needs are, then they're not going to move forward to accomplish those for us. And so I think it's critical that we make sure that they're aware of what it is that we need to have done now. On a side note, I didn't realize the Transportation System Plan was going to be discussed this evening, but from the Oregon City Business Alliance position, as well as my own personally, I would like to have the city look at where those investment dollars are going. If I owned a business, I would be looking for a return on investment on any investment dollars that I made for new equipment. So when you're looking at where you want to prioritize those TSP dollars, look at what areas of the city will we get immediate return in the way of projects, development through SDCs, through property taxes, or any other source of revenue that will generate income back into your coffers for public works maintenance and other things. I know there's a long list, but I would just suggest you kind of look at it from a return on investment standpoint. But again, congratulations. I wish the city the very best and the Oregon City Business Alliance stands here to support you in every way we can. Thank you.
Thanks, Kent.
Thank you, Kent.
Mr. Baskins, you led the tours at the Rose Farm?
I did, sir.
That was a commendable job. I want to compliment you. My wife and I attended that and you made history come alive. So thank you for a great job.
We had a great time. We really do.
Almost didn't recognize you in current attire without your possibles bag.
Thank you. Had I been in town, I would have been there, but I was not in town, so.
One more.
Oh, Joyce Gifford, come on down.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Joyce Gifford. I live at 1324 Beaver Lane in Oregon City. And my favorite bumper sticker is, "The world is run by those who show up." And I am so glad that you show up here because I know that you are volunteers. You don't get paid for the countless hours that you sit here at commission meetings and all those other great events that you go to. And so I appreciate all the work that you do. And there's a lot of other great volunteers here in our city. And I, for one, am also glad that there is the possibility of having urban renewal back in our toolbox. But I also know that there's other great volunteers for this city who don't agree with that. And I want you, as the Urban Renewal Commission and the few, couple others that are with you on that commission, as you look at those projects, I want you to be very careful in how those urban renewal dollars are spent, which projects go forward. Because the city is known for some really great projects we've done in the past and also a couple of projects that in retrospect could have been done differently. So I don't want any of that retrospect could have been done differently. Let's do things right the first time. So I love this city. I know that you love this city and I love the volunteers. And if anybody wants to continue this conversation with me about where the city should be going, you can find me down at the Concerts in the Park on Thursday nights at the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. Or this Saturday downtown at our first city celebration and brew fest, Friday nights in August at Movies in the Park. And August 1st, Tuesday, August 1st, at National Night Out. That'll be at the Mount Pleasant Facility, home of the future site of the Oregon City Police Station. And let's move this city forward in a positive way, but also honors everybody that lives here in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Appreciate that. Thank you, Joyce. Appreciate that.
Good.
Okay, so we're done with public comment. But before we finish that, I do, I wanted to say something when the, when the other police officers were here, but it slipped my mind, but there was an article in the Oregonian earlier this week that listed the top 10 safest cities in Oregon, and Oregon City was in the top 10. In fact, at number seven. So, out of this 150 or so cities in Oregon, we're in the top 10, and that's because, mostly because of our chief and the dedicated officers in the police department. So thanks to you, Jim. So back to the agenda. Under General Business, we have PC 17-079, second reading ordinance 17-1008, annexation of .92 acres at 19763 South Parish Road. Ms. Turway.
Thank you very much. We're proposing a second reading of the ordinance. The first reading was done on July 5th.
So I would entertain a motion for second reading and final adoption.
Move to approve second reading of ordinance number 17-1008, annexation of .092 acres at 19763 South Parish Road.
Second. Moved and seconded. Mr. Kabizman.
Ordinance number 17-1008, ordinance of the city of Oregon City approving annexation proposal number AN-16-0002 and approving the annexation of certain property located at 19763 South Parish Road to the city of Oregon City.
Any further discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ie?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Okay, so next up is 17-416, and this scares me to death. Contract with Tyler Technologies Inc. for Enterprise Resource Planning Software and Implementation, Mr. Parnow. Governments generally aren't known for doing software implementation very well.
Who is?
Not up to this point, Your Honor. But we're moving ahead, and we're going to do it exceptionally well. So thank you, Mayor Holliday and City Commissioners. At your January goal-setting retreat, you established a new priority under Goal Five, which is maintain fiscal health and long-term stability. And that new priority is to implement a new permitting software system. The current system that we have is completely antiquated, and it really inhibits customer service that we provide to the development community in departments like planning and building and public works. And also, we were asked to look into the option to be able to implement a replacement of our entire software system, which is also very old. I'm super excited that we are able to find a solution that's cost-effective for a city our size, and also would be, will be a vast improvement on the existing system that we have now. And with my excitement also comes the awareness, as the mayor had said, that a system implementation is a serious undertaking, requiring a lot of time and effort. But I'm excited because we have, I have with me tonight Ryan Bradyhoff, who's the city's senior financial analyst. And Ryan is part of our staff. He also brings a ton of system implementation experience, having worked on both sides as part of a software company. And he also understands financial systems and permitting systems. So Ryan's prepared some background information for you, and he's here to ask for approval of the contract. That'll turn it over to you, Ryan.
Thank you. All right, good evening, Commissioners. In this presentation, I'll be presenting the contract with Tyler Technologies for an ERP system to include software, training, and implementation services.
Okay. So rule number one is we don't use acronyms. So ERP is?
Exactly. That is the first slide. What is an ERP system? Well, ERP simply stands for Enterprise Resource Planning. Basically, it's a system of integrated software applications, and specifically business process management software. So a perfect example of an ERP system is a system we currently use. It's a system referred to as Eden. And it's used for a lot of different purposes and functions of the city. As you can see here, it's used by the following departments for the following function. So that includes finance. We issue all of our vendor payments out of this system. We enter the budget into the system. This system produces financial reports for us. Payroll pays all the employees through this system. Human Resources uses it for applicant tracking, open enrollment. Utility Customer Service uses it to track service orders, record meter reads, send out, generate all the utility bills to all the citizens. Building, planning, and engineering use it to track inspections, issue permits, and general land management functions. So that gives you an idea of what an ERP system is. And again, the one we currently use is Eden, and we've used it since the 1980s. So it was first installed on a DOS platform, and then in 2002, it was upgraded to a Windows platform, and we've been using it in that current form ever since 2002. So quite a while to use a system. Now, the 2017-2019 commission goals, Goal Five, is to maintain fiscal health and long-term stability. And one of the priorities under that goal was to upgrade the Enterprise Resource Planning system. And two of those milestones, replace the existing permitting system and assess replacement options for the remaining financial management system. So this contract will accomplish that goal. I'd like to just quickly walk through a timeline to show how we got to this point today. For a number of years, different departments have expressed an interest in moving to a new system, moving away from our current outdated system. And so really, by January of 2015, certain departments were making steps to do that. So specifically, first with planning, building, and engineering, they initiated the project. And at that time, the plan was, is that they would go out and find a system to replace that portion. So they did that. They found the system and included an amount in the 2015-2017 budget. But then during the 2015-17 budget cycle, the remaining users, the remaining departments in the city, recognized an opportunity to replace the entire system. So actually, at that time, finance and payroll and human resources and utility customer service joined with planning, building, and engineering. They joined the product, I'm sorry, joined the project to replace the entire software product. So as a result, the city decided to forego replacement in the 2015-2017 budget. So those amounts that were budgeted weren't spent in the last budget cycle. And instead, the city issued an RFP, a Request for Proposals, to determine the feasibility of replacing the entire system all at once. Based on the responses from the vendors, it was determined that a full replacement would be feasible. And then therefore, the city commission established the upgrade as a formal goal earlier this year. And then five or six months later, the full system replacement was included in the approved budget. Now, the, like I said, the RFP was issued about a year ago, and since then, a total of three vendors replied to the RFP. And the city responded to two of those vendors with requests for alternate solutions and better pricing, as well as the city evaluated two other low-cost solutions. After that, a panel consisting of key stakeholders, including representatives from across the city, evaluated the proposals using 15 criteria that were included in the RFP. And based on the scoring they assigned, that was assigned by the evaluators, the proposed system that ranked the highest was Tyler's InCode InnerGov solution. And then that brings us today with the request to award the contract to Tyler for that product. Now, the Tyler InCode InnerGov product is designed specifically and exclusively for local governments. In fact, it's used by quite a few neighboring cities. The city of Lake Oswego actually began using it in 2012, followed by West Lynn, implemented in 2015, and most recently this year, both the city of Gladstone and Milwaukee. Moving next to the contract cost. So originally, like I said, the building, planning, and engineering departments originally included an amount in the budget, in the 2015-2017 budget, and the city forewent on that expense. And instead, the, all the other departments joined, and in the 2017-2019 budget is included the total contract cost there of $382,000 divided between those departments. And then, of course, with any software system, there's annual maintenance. And actually, the current system, Eden, as you see there, under old system, is almost $120,000. And the new system will actually see a cost savings in the annual maintenance. We recognize there will be additional costs to the project, and so we've included an amount in the 2017-2019 budget for that. So in addition to the contract costs we just looked at, there will be other things like travel cost for training staff, employee backfill, a classroom training, equipment or facility to perform the training at, additional IT infrastructure and/or additional Tyler products and services, like the potential for a custom report or something like that. In regards to the classroom training facility, we've already got some good news, that we were able to secure a free facility, actually, just a couple blocks up at the fire station. So we'll be able to use that room free of charge for all the training. So that was some good news there. As for some of the benefits, there's a lot to gain by converting to a more sophisticated, intuitive, advanced system. Some of those things include automation. There's actually quite a few processes that are currently manual, and that includes a lot of the budgeting process, all of the project accounting, fixed asset capitalization, and the entire purchasing function. All of these things are manual now, and they'll be automated in the new system. Mobile applications for completion of inspections in the field, that's something we can't do now in our current system, but we will be able to do in the new system. A citizen portal for management of accounts and payments, as well as an employee self-service portal for timekeeping and benefit tracking. So for instance, the ability for an employee to request time off and have that routed to a supervisor for approval. That can all be done electronically in the system, as well as entering their time, having their time approved, and having it imported into payroll system, which reduces redundant data entry. The new system will have integration between the cash receipting function and the various billing functions, and that's actually something that doesn't exist in our current system. You would think it would, but it doesn't. So our new system will have that integration. Also, integrated GIS functionality and paperless processing across several functions.
GIS?
Yes, GIS. We have-
GIS.
Physical Information Systems, which is the city's mapping system.
Yes, thank you. Here's just a quick look at the implementation calendar. We're hoping that if we contract with Tyler now, that by 2019, the city, the entire city will be up and running on this program, because an implementation is a very involved, time-consuming process. So here's the calendar we've laid out. It would start with finance going first, and implementing going live on July 1 of 2018, followed by building, planning, and engineering, implementing the permitting system, and then going live on payroll, January 1 of 2019, and then finally, utility customer service after that. The red just indicates kind of the busy times of years for those departments. And, you know, with an implementation spanning so many months, it's hard to totally avoid those busy times, but by staggering it this way, we hope to ensure a successful implementation. And with that, I would like to recommend that the city commission authorize the city manager to execute the contract with Tyler Technologies for an ERP system to include software, training, and implementation services. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Mr. Shaw?
How long has Tyler Technologies been around?
Seemingly forever. When I was, as Wyatt mentioned, I used to work for a software company, and they were our biggest competitor. And they're probably the most dominant force in this market space for municipalities. They're based in Texas, and we've gone, we actually, the city uses some of their products currently. In fact, our municipal court uses the InCode product, and they've been to the annual conferences. So I'm not sure exactly what year they began, but they're definitely a very-
Has anybody on your staff used this, been involved with Tyler Technologies before, on your staff, Wyatt?
Yeah, so as Ryan mentioned, the municipal court implemented the InCode system about two years ago. Ryan helped with that implementation. We're very familiar with Tyler products. The InCode solution, as opposed to the Eden solution that Ryan presented earlier, will be a huge improvement in functionality. But we're definitely, we've been, had relations with Tyler for a long time.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Unexpected, I know. So Tyler's a very stable company. They've been in business a long time. Will be there in terms of long-term support. Those of us from the private sector who are very familiar with these kind of systems have expectations, and we also know there's pitfalls to them. We expect increased productivity, maybe doing away with some clerical functions that should go away with this type of process. We want to see some efficiencies. I can see benefits in information retrieval. I hope there's an internal champion within the city that's going to drive this, because without that, these things fail. So I don't, is that you?
I would say that's me, but I would also say there's a lot of people here that are really excited about this. I think even some people probably in this room, that really, people that initiated this project originally, and that are really excited about it, so.
I've been through many of these, and I can tell you, people want to try to make the new one look like the old one. And that's not, there's no benefit to that.
That is true.
So, I'm counting on you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. I'll add to that, yeah, we're very aware of that. I've been through two system implementations myself. Ryan has that background. Maria McElveen, the deputy director, who's also here tonight, she issued the RFP. She's very familiar with system implementations, and really, all of the departments have been involved to date. John Lewis's team, or Turway's team. And so we'll have Ryan as the project manager. That saves us from having to have an outside consultant, but Ryan's an expert in that area. And then we'll have, each department will have a power user, and we plan to do things very well, because we've got, you know, tens of thousands of customer accounts in the system, and it's going to work, it's going to work perfectly once our implementation's in place.
So in the process of evaluating this, you interviewed all these other users, you got their experiences positive, you feel confident going forward. This company provides for security from hacking, I presume? Okay. I have no objection to it. The benefits are many. I question a two-year implementation. By the time we get it implemented, we'll be in the second cycle of training for version two. But if those provisions are all made and the support for the system is ongoing, I'm fine with it. I'd like to see some kind of benefit evaluation after the fact.
You bet.
You know, this is what, these are the savings we realized. Thank you.
Commissioner, do you have anything?
Just, I think it was your third slide or so where you talked about how, you know, it's real broad. It goes over several departments: finance, HR, building, planning. So it's not, you're not just purchasing for finance alone, even though it's a financial type, you know, but it's, it will assist a lot of different departments, and I really like that. I guess I'm really surprised at how it's been around since 2002 and prior to, you know, in the DOS platform in the 80s. I mean, it's time for an upgrade, and I like it that there, I know there's a large investment upfront, but then your maintenance costs are actually lower than with Eden, so that was really great to point out. So I don't have any problem with it.
I do have one final question. Is there a module that helps Mr. John Lewis create Reader's Digest versions of his PowerPoint presentation?
No. We can put a maximum word count in this type of report.
John, I appreciate everything that you said.
Yes, John, we do appreciate it.
Everybody gets picked on for something. So the only thing, other thing I have to say is, I've been familiar with Tyler for a couple of years. They're a regular participant in the U.S. Conference of Mayors, so, and they're on the Business Council, so, you know, I'm aware of them, and they have a good reputation in local government field. To be honest, I was shocked at how cheap it was.
Yeah.
You know, I'm used to hearing implementation numbers, and they're, you know, 3 million or 5 million, you know, so at, you know, $380,000 sounds like a bargain to me. So as long as you guys keep your eye on it, make sure it doesn't go south somehow, I'm all in favor of it. Mr. Kabizman, you had something?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out two things. One, you alluded to early on, governments and software projects. And typically, where you run into problems is where governments try to create their own solution. You know, thinking of the Portland Water Billing System from a decade or so ago, or the Oregon Health Program. And what happens is that it sort of morphs and becomes, you start out as one thing, and it tries to answer everything. And that's not the approach that this is going down. It's going down a system that already exists. And as Commissioner O'Donnell indicated, you know, that means people have to change the way they're doing to go back to the old way, you know, loses some of the benefit. But in any event, because you're buying a system that already exists, and as Mr. Bradyhoff indicated, several cities in the region already use it, and it's, you know, somewhat proven, so, you know, that risk is somewhat mitigated. The other thing I want to note is, because this is a software licensing, I've talked to Mr. Bradyhoff about having a software attorney look at it, and they're taking a look, and so there might be some- be some minor changes to the contract. It's not going to affect the numbers as much as some of the clauses and conditions, and, you know, whatever it may be is relatively minor, but just wanted to let you know that.
Mr. Conkle won't execute the agreement until all the legalese has been done?
Right. So what you see is not necessarily the final. It may be. We just want to make sure that because it is an investment, it's going to affect the city for probably at least a decade. We want to get it right.
So one final question. What version is this?
It's version 10, and that's.
Okay, so we're not version 1.0.
I would pay special attention to the revision costs, the special requests, those people who want clipper ship programs to do. But those are where they keep adding costs. So if it's good as presented, just watch your cost adders.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move to approve contract with Tyler Technologies upon city manager's final decision on it.
Seconded.
For discussion? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Iad?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda?
Thank you, commissioners.
Nope.
Thank you. Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Moved by Commissioner, no, I'd say it by Commissioner Shaw. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Iad?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
If I can get my mouse to move. There we go.
He's freaking out, see? See the mouse that's freaking out?
Okay, so communication, Mr. Manager?
Let's start tonight with two updates from Ms. Riggs.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I wanted to give you an update. We had a photo contest recently, and we had 123 photos submitted into this contest. We have begun this photo contest to start accumulating very nice photos around the city of Oregon City to use in some of our publications or to market and advertise the city, use on our website. So, let's see here, these were the winning photos. And we had a couple of categories here. The categories are listed here with this place matters. This was the first-place winner. The second-place winner is listed there, and the third-place winner. And then with the natural wonders, we had first, second, and third-place winners. The history category, we had first, second, and third place. Then we also did age categories. So we had for the 15 through 17 age category. And we had a tie for the second place. And then for ages 12 through 14.
That's my grandson.
Look at that, yep. And second and third place there. So those are great photos. We will be using these photos in our Trail News publications over the next several months. We'll do installations of them. We also are inviting the public and the winners of these to, and their families, to come, and they will be displayed on boards at the library for the weekend of July 27 through the 30th. So please come and walk around and take a look at these winning photos. And the next item I wanted to talk about is the Commission Chambers is going to have an upgrade. We're going to upgrade the cameras, the monitors, the projector, and a lot of equipment in the back that you don't get to see, but it does a lot of work. We will be doing that August 10 through September 1. So all of the boards and committee meetings, along with your meetings, will be located in the community center at the library during that time. The Commission Chambers will be completely shut down and having people in here working all day, all night to do this upgrade. Also, the meeting, your work session for August, which will be a joint work session, and an additional work session will be held at the library as well. So it's just right before that starts. So the work session on August 8 will be held at the library, and then starting August 10, all of the meetings until September 1 will be held at the library.
So we're not reconfiguring any physical space, just the electronics?
That is correct.
Okay, questions?
Okay. So just a couple of updates. So every couple of years, we go through an urban growth boundary analysis amendment, make requests to Metro for consideration if we want to expand the UGB. We did obviously a very significant UGB expansion, 2002, 2004, Park Place, South End, Beaver Creek Road. So we saw no reason to come forward with UGB expansion at this point. We've had zero development essentially in those urban growth boundary areas. But we did receive a request from the Oregon City Golf Course. They have a small tax lot that's adjacent to all of the properties that are in the UGB. So explained to them we weren't really, don't have a process set up. We had no intention to do it, but that I would, you know, take it to the commission. If this is something you'd like to bring, us to bring to you in a work session for you to consider, we would do that. And then potentially, depending on how the work session goes, you know, bring it back in a commission hearing, if that's something the commission decides they'd like to do.
How big is that piece?
I don't have the exact acreage.
Scientific wild-ass guess.
Yeah, it's not very big. It essentially completes the properties that were already brought in. There's a small triangular piece, three, four acres.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
A vast majority of it is unbuildable, but essentially, they're just trying to.
Tie it all.
Tie it all together, everything, so that all the properties that are owned by the same ones.
I'm fine with that being an item on the work session. You guys?
Yes.
Okay, great. We'll bring that forward, and then we'll go from there. Just real quick, then, we have, and Ms. Gifford got a lot of these for us there. Just a reminder, tomorrow night, Concerts in the Park at the end of the Oregon Trail, Dance Hall Day, 6:30 to 8:30. First City Celebration on Saturday downtown on July 22, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., National Night Out at the former Mount Pleasant site on Tuesday, August 1. Volunteer Recognition Event will be the last Concerts in the Park on August 24. We also have a Red Cross will be doing a blood drive on Friday, July 21, at the community room over at the library from 12:15 to 4:30. And next, July 26, from 6:00 to 8:00 in the chambers, will be the third meeting on the review of draft recommendations and implementation next steps for the Riverwalk Transportation and Access Summit. So just a couple of things happening here over the next week or so. And with that.
No, one more. Metropolitan Mayors?
Yep, so I was going to, yeah, discussion about the Oregon Mayors Consortium?
It's the Metropolitan Mayors Consortium. So I am a member of the Metropolitan Mayors Consortium. It's the 26 mayors of the, inside the metro boundaries. We meet once a month, and it's becoming a pretty big deal. We went down to the legislature, testified on a few things. We actually made a difference at the legislature. They said that's the first time they'd ever seen a group of mayors come and testify. And they recognize that we have a real say in the electorate of our communities. And so this last year, we made a more formal kind of a situation where we hired a lobbying company to help us at the legislature. They brief us on a monthly basis. But part of that deal was is that, based on population, we had to pay dues to the organization. So we didn't pay our dues last year, and our dues are coming up to be paid this year. It's for Oregon City and communities of our size. It's $1,000 a year, which I think is a pretty, is a pretty cheap way to get the kind of influence that we get, especially now that Mayor Wheeler is attending. So, you know, we actually have a much more amplified voice than in the past, and we expect that influence to grow as the organization grows. So I just wanted to get ahead now that everybody was okay with us doing that. Where's it at? Where's it at? It's held at, in Twalatin at the, there's a hotel there by the lake, I forget, Hayden's Century Hotel, yeah. And one of the key provisions of the mayors, Metropolitan Mayors Consortium is, is that only mayors can go. So if you can't be there, you can't send a city manager or another one of your people. You got to be the guy to be there.
Yeah, I just don't know if it's going to be here or not.
No.
Sometime it will be.
So Lou Ogden was the chair last year. Shane Beamis is the chair this year. The chair will rotate around, and depending on how everybody feels, it'd be, you know, it's kind of in Twalatin because it was Lou's deal. It may eventually move somewhere, you know, on a basis, just depends. Right now, the city of Twalatin is still, oh, no, the city isn't staffing anymore. So Thorn Run Partners is our lobbying firm consultant, and they actually staff the meetings now. So that's what it's all about.
Cool, good, good.
Anything else for me, sir?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner O'Donnell, got anything?
No.
Mr. Iad?
Just one. The Willamette Falls Locks Working Group met today, and they've been meeting all along. But apparently, I'm not sure the history of whether the city has had a representative there or not, but, oh, yes, Carol Pauley.
Yeah, we had.
So anyway, I attended that meeting today, and as the city's representative, and intend to do that on a monthly basis. So.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make that announcement. And in the future, I'll try to have a little more report on things once I get up to speed.
So somewhere in emails over the last couple of days, something about, and I can't, I don't know the acronym, so I can't say what it is, PAT?
Oh, yeah, it was.
Perhaps for Equitable Housing Group?
Yes, that was the one, yeah. Yeah, and I was volunteering to be on that.
And I'm more than happy. That looks like a big group. That's a whole room full of cats to herd, so good luck with that.
Thank you, nope.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, just a couple, attended chamber this morning with Ms. Gifford back here, and then wanted to remind everybody again of the Concerts in the Park, and come by and support your local nonprofit, Oregon City Optimists Club. We'll feed you there for $7. And lastly, we did this at the last meeting, but I forgot to bring the plaque in. And here's our plaque officially for Best Park, which is Rivercrest. And I wanted to make sure that Mr. Phil Lewis got this to put upon his office someplace up there and stuff. So this came from the Best of Oregon City program that we did, and this got voted on. And I think that we had the promenade got the vote for best walk-around thing, wasn't it, that you did? For the best walk?
Best place to take a stroll.
Best place, take a stroll, and this became the Best Park. So anyway, we'll make sure we get that to you. So, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, so I lost my spot here. I did the Metropolitan Mayors Association meeting on last Wednesday. And then, as most of you know, former Mayor Don Anderson passed last weekend, or the weekend before last, and the city wanted to do something kind of special because Don had served in many capacities, not only as mayor, as city commissioner, but on the school board. So with the help of Tony Conkle and Captain Davis and Justin Young, we got a full-size military flag. And we did a private ceremony for the family here at City Hall, and then we took it up and did the same ceremony at the old Jackson Campus Building, and Don's office was just inside those doors. And then I presented that flag at the service. So the family was very appreciative, and I just wanted to say once again how much we appreciated Don's service. Beyond that, the only other thing I had was I did have a meeting with a bunch of folks talking about the golf course and that development moving forward. And I did have a short conversation with some folks that are talking about developments at the Cove, or not the Cove, at the landfill, and they were excited to hear that the urban renewal measure had been at least temporarily defeated in court. I do want to ask Mr. Gubaisman to give us a short update on that and what the likelihood is of an appeal or this excessive appeal.
So, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, earlier this week, the court finally issued its opinion on the urban renewal measure. As you know, it was passed by the voters, but we had some significant concerns with it, as did the Urban Renewal Agency. We had an argument in, I want to say April, we finally got our decision. And what the court found was that the measure is ineffective, that it was preempted by ORS Chapter 457. We made multiple arguments. That was one of them, that it was preempted by state statute. And so at this point, the urban renewal measure that was passed in November is no longer in effect. There is an opportunity to appeal. That appeal deadline starts when a judgment is entered, and that will probably happen in the next few weeks. It takes a little while to put together a judgment, and there's some wrangling about what it says, and then it's got to be entered in the court's register. So we're probably about two months from knowing whether or not anybody's going to appeal. As far as appeal likelihood, it's hard to tell. We prevailed, so we don't have anything to appeal on. To the extent somebody else does appeal, we could challenge, we could bring back our arguments that the judge found against us on. I like our position better than the other side's. Number one, you're defending a decision. That's almost always a better position to be in. Plus, I just think it's the right answer, you know. So we will see what happens, but it's out of our hands. What I can tell you right now is that urban renewal is no longer constrained by the provisions that were added to the charter, and so it can continue to operate as it was.
Okay, so let me ask a question of both you and Ms. Riggs. This is currently in the charter, correct?
It is currently in the charter.
So does it get removed from the charter? Does it, what is the, what's the technical route there?
I, this isn't something I've thought too long about. My initial thought.
It's okay to say I don't know.
Yeah. But my initial thought is that it probably remains in the charter, but with a.
An annotation?
Annotation noting that this has been ruled ineffective by the Clackamas County Circuit Court, and if it goes on appeal up by there, because it was passed by the voters.
Okay, so I want to know, I want to know, what I would like to do is have a work session, an executive session on the first urban renewal measure. Can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
No reason not to.
Other than that, that's all I have. Anything for the good of the order? Then we're adjourned.